Alright, I guess we'll everybody ready for this budget meeting. Lisa, I guess I'll just go to you real quick with the numbers and then we'll just go from there.
Yeah, balance.
Alright, there we go. Problem solved. We're on a problem.
Do you have any completed, like I made the change we talked about last time? I did make some adjustments. But we do have a balanced budget. Like we didn't want to overlast nothing major came my way.
Okay. Awesome.
I have a couple of questions. First question is, is there any change in the schedule? That would affect the budget.
I mean, the only ones, I mean, sometimes change are the ones for engineering costs, but I don't, I don't remember seeing emails of them going up.
I didn't see anything that came my way with any major changes.
And that's what I'm saying, so.
Here's the question. We got a letter from Andrew Reed from one great now.
That, thank you.
Did any of those fees go up, Jim? I know you here, we did not change in our fee schedule.
Well, his fees actually take a lot, don't they?
Well, I'm not sure, I didn't know. I thought that was part of last meeting. Because it wasn't highlighted changes if there were any. I don't know.
I think it was a very low increase, but I think it was an increase.
And pretty sure that we put it in there, I saw that, because we made all adjustments at any creases.
This is chipping out because some of those fees.
And I don't think, I don't think that was a significant, a significant increase in any sort.
No, I think it was a lot of dollars. But I thought that was approved at the last meeting.
We approved that.
So I would say yes. But you could, I'm sure you made adjustments.
I have another question.
Yes, sir. The amusement taxes in there, I talked to Linda today at this event, and she said the state is like days away from passing something. What will that do to this?
It will not affect it much, because I didn't really use it to make the changes.
Okay, so being rid of it, and it's no longer allowed, like you can't do it, it won't matter?
No.
Okay.
I knew that was coming, so I tried not to use it.
She said days away from being, they're doing something.
I do know though, even when they do it, we should, we will get a percentage.
Yes.
But I don't think it's going to be a significant percentage.
Yeah.
But we will get something out of what they take.
And Lisa, you're going to tell me that this, that tech pay is a division?
Oh, I didn't get you that, or did I? I'm sorry, I forgot all about that, and you didn't remind me. I can actually, we can, I can get to it early, probably, I've been down the quote up. I mean, the tech's a pay, and what we get is in there, and what goes out, and I think we don't, we don't bring in what we put out. I just don't have the exact number.
What number? I can't.
I mean, it may got, I mean, was all on the folders?
I don't know if it's specific, I'll look.
Oh, tech's a pay, I see it.
Did you find it?
Yeah.
All right, is that one on me, because I forgot when we left us.
I think we should have a discussion about that.
Maybe, yeah, we can talk about it right now. It's not budget stuff. Alright, yeah, so maybe you want to bring up about the intertech with the phones here. So, I don't know when it was, a couple of weeks ago, they gave us, alright, here are the tattalax of phones. Jeff and Travis worked on, alright, we don't need the tattalax of phones, we just got to be able to have, you know, voicemail, waiting, transfer. So the numbers that they came back, they said, alright, this is the best we can do with what you want with the phone that you need. So, there's two quotes in there on what the before was and what the after was. So, I mean, unless we're taking away, like, you know, call and transfer this department, or like, alright, hey, I gotta put you on hold as I do that. So that's basically the bottom line phone to do what we need to do. I mean, obviously, there's probably a couple of extra options on there that we don't need, but for what we need, no, no extra options.
And take nothing off, or screws up our internet charges.
Alright, so basically, that's the bottom line phone that we got.
Which is this phone?
That, which is that one, yes.
What's this?
That was the first one, that was with the higher estimated quote. Yes. Sir.
So.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
So, wait, I don't know from what something I was wrong, I see this quote for 18,000. This, like a separate quote for 69,000.
So, there's, yeah, there's some quotes like Sagoma.
Yeah. These are like four separate quotes that I don't look at.
Because if I'm correct, so they broke it down into two different ones. One was this for City Hall, and one was for the Police Department. So, so you may see two, like, two Sagoma ones, and.
So it's 9,400 for the Police Department. It's contact with Travis.
I think that's the ID. What's that, what is?
Phone quote, something like.
There's two in there for each one, two for everything.
16 extensions for a current length of 60 months, five years. What time cost 9,400 dollars monthly charges?
And the 94 is the newest rate, right? With the not-so-special phones, if I remember, because the other one was a lot higher.
And they also only exist in parts, and you can say about the month, 9,400 dollars.
Yes.
So that's actually. Or 18,000 dollars for that. Are they yearly?
I'm just going to call the guy right now, and then you just ask the questions.
They did, they did. They did.
So.
And 18,000 dollars for the rest.
So the ones that Travis has here, because he was talking with them, so originally, it was at 18, correct? Oh, originally it was 11,009, he got them down.
This is what they were, Thomas was the problem.
Oh, for, oh.
Well, what was that, 10,000?
So you guys went down.
You got down to 9,000, they did all, over all the bells and whistles.
Okay. And then, are you talking anything about computers?
No.
It was, it was just, so, just to say him, so originally, at, for the computers, were at 60,000, and now Travis got down to 42.
But that's still, the computers have to be equal on a wants versus needs basis.
Yeah.
And go from there, they can't always end up saying that. And there are some that don't need any more, so that's the process that's going to have to go through. Our wants or needs, and what needs to be done now will be in time.
Yeah, so the ones for the police were at 11, down to 9, they got rid of all the bells and whistles.
That's for the phones.
That's for the, that, yeah, that's for the phones, correct.
So for the computers, you want the 45,000 dollars.
Correct, yes.
No, 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 no. Yeah, they, so they went, I have them down, 60,000, 60,000. I have them at 60,946, with a deposit of 42,000.
Okay, well.
So 60, yeah.
The quote that we got is the same, but. So we're looking at, you said 62,000?
If you're looking at security deposits, that's a whole different ballgame now. No one said mention security deposits.
Yeah, I don't think we should pay the security deposits.
I said, we can get that, we can call and get it.
And then the other, the other one for the city, for the rest of the city is 69,000. 48,000 dollars security deposit.
Did they ever, I don't remember them once mentioning security deposits in any of these conversations.
I don't remember that either. Now, is the security deposit something like, for example, the cost is, I'm making these computers, is 60, alright, we have to pay 42 out of 60, is that what that's referring, that's how I take it, but I'm.
No, the security deposit is a long sub.
Okay, I, I know that. So we, so you're telling me we have to pay 42 and 60?
Yeah.
And they're asking for a separate security deposit, that's what it means, that's what they need to explain that better. Otherwise, it's a whole different ballgame.
But the 42 is part of the 60, you.
Um.
How many computers? But I don't understand how that's going to be.
How many computers do we want?
Well, I mean.
The purpose is what we will be getting. And how, isn't that just your department?
It's just our, they just committed to just our department.
Right.
That's 4,000.
And would you guys just get new laptops?
We get three laptops out of this one, too.
So.
But are they going to be adaptable?
So the computers were 23, and obviously all the licensing, the software, you know, all that, yes.
And the licensing, are they going to include the three of us?
Yes, so basically, that's, that's built into this for 15, 15 users, and this will be only eight computers on this, on this, the computer and network. So we have eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
So you've got network, so. But they say that wasn't so good.
They're recommending, they're recommending an overhaul everything, and that's why I said we literally need to do a want and need, because it doesn't all need to be done. But they're coming in, and they want to come in and just do better things.
That five lines, that five line.
Correct.
I mean, West Coast.
There's, there's certain things that we have to look at realistically, I've been saying that, like, like I've been saying for a while, but there's a want and need basis.
Okay, so there's four total quotes, right? Yeah, there's two, two new ones and two old ones.
There's a place and two for the city.
It's an old and a new, you know.
Hello?
Like the original one and a new one, that's all of them. Does that make sense?
Now, the police quote is different from what Travis has, and we've gone down.
I see 65,000.
62.
That's the computers, yes.
What's the 9,400?
That's the phones.
And then the 18,843 for the city, not police.
And that's.
And then 69,102, so we're looking at 162,000 dollars.
Never, that's, that's never. Well, then, computers.
And then realistically, we're, like I said, the phone is something we are operating right away. The computers need to be a want and need basis, because we cannot do, we cannot do a complete overhaul of everything here. There's a lot of computers that don't need to.
What's the new?
We want a security deposit.
Do you care if we're trying to figure they can ask that question?
Oh, no.
Hey, guys, I got Nate from InterTech, he can answer that question about this security deposit. Alright, go ahead, Josh. Hey, Nate, as Jeff said, we have you on speakerphone right now. So, the one question that we had here, we're looking through the quotes, and we see, obviously, the quote of the item, and then we have a security deposit separately. So, this from understanding, we want to verify and make sure, so you're saying the security deposit is an additional fee on top of the total costs of computers, is that correct or incorrect?
Incorrect, so, the way we do our quote, might be, when we send you a quote, if you do not have ACA set up, we do require the down payment to start the work. That is, is like 16 to 17 percent of the total. That, that is, so if you pay that first, it comes off of the total that's due, and then you would just go the rest after the work.
So is the down payment.
Not committed, not paid upfront.
Okay.
So we do require that just to get the work started, if not in addition to the total.
Alright, so it's basically, it's just, as we said here, it's just a down payment to what the total funds are, you get that one time, we'll say down payment, then once everything's complete, then we just pay the difference in the total sum, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, because we're just wondering that, we didn't, we didn't know if that was an additional fee, or if that was a down payment as you described, but okay, down payment as you described.
So, ask him to pull up the purchase quote detail.
He's in his car.
7841.
He's in his car, he's driving. Okay. Any other direct questions? I mean, obviously.
I want to make sure we understand this completely. So, in his quote, in the quote, it says, one-time only cost and monthly charges. This is for the police. For phones. It says 9,462 dollars and 60 cents, and a reoccurring cost of 300 dollars and 83 cents a month. For 60 months. Under that, it says total plus security deposit, 9,462 dollars and 60 cents. Are you saying that we do not owe that security deposit?
Uh, no, so, the, the security deposit is required, sort of, like, you can, you can pay and pull up, if you, if you don't want to pay, you can pull up, it requires a security deposit to order the part and start the work. It, it, it's not in addition to the total, it would be subtracted from the total, so whatever is remaining after that.
So.
So things that are being, what are being.
So why does it say plus?
Well, I, I don't have a electronic, so I don't have to.
So, long story short, Nate, it says, the original, it says, it says the one-time cost is this, and it says the, the down pay, plus the down payment. So we're hung up saying, the security, the security deposit, it says plus the security deposit. We just want to make sure we understand that, as you say, the security deposit is really a down payment, and not just an additional cost.
Correct.
Hey, can you send us new invoices?
That's, that's, that says it in that wording, that, that this is a down payment, rather than a security deposit plus, if that makes sense.
Well, the one-time cost is the one-time cost. Anything over that is, there's no, nothing above the one-time cost.
There are, there are months, I mean, so.
Month, yes.
Yeah.
There are four different quotes that we're presenting.
Yeah.
For repair, for, for user replacement, observer replacement, who have more for the voice quote. There are, there are monthly service costs on, on each of those quotes, that will be added to your monthly invoices. But in terms of, we're talking just upfront cost, it's, there's no, it's not security deposit, and then you have to pay, it's, it's one total cost, and you have to make it, ease the down payment from start work, if you do not want to pay the total.
Okay, so then you need to send us quotes that, that spell that out, so we have it, so we know exactly what we're paying.
It's all, it's all in those quotes that I just.
They, they just, we just don't like the wording, how it says a security deposit, rather than a down payment. It's just that, leave, that little bit of a technical term, that we just want to make sure is clearly stated in the invoice slash the contract, that that's okay.
I can try, so we don't, that's, it's all third-party software that we're using. So if we're talking the hardware phone, we use the third-party app. If it's a voice quote, we're talking about that, the vendor we use for the voice quote, like, I don't really have a way. Can you make a change to that software?
Nate, if you could do this, and make it, if you don't have access, which is fine, could you send an email over to Jeff just to clarify, you know, that we spoke, that the cost is a one-time fee, I mean, like, the one-time cost setup fee of the, whatever it may be, and it's not a security deposit, but rather than just a down payment, could you do that? That way, we just have that for our records, and you can also have it for your records as well?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, definitely can send that over to you.
Does that work, if he sends that email?
It's, 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 for what he said, if we don't do a down payment, if we pay everything in full, there's no down payment.
Correct.
Okay, so, the way I interpret what he's saying right now is, the only cost we have right now is the one-time cost and monthly charges. So the one-time cost is 9,462 dollars and 60 cents, and then the reoccurring monthly charge is 300 dollars and 83 cents. Anything other than that, we're not responsible for, or we don't owe.
Yeah, I think that's what he's referring to. Yes.
Is that correct?
Is that, is that correct? So he basically, he said, if we pay the upfront cost a one-time of the total amount, and then, obviously, our monthly charge for the services, we owe nothing after that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no security deposit.
Correct.
I think the problem is all the wording.
Yeah, alright.
It says plus.
Do we have monthly fees for the computers, or just the phones?
Nate, are there, I'm assuming Nate misunderstands, there are monthly, are, are there monthly fees for the computers also, like there are for the phones?
Yeah, so, and it has it on the invoice there, there's, there's, there's monthly service fees for servers, computers, any kinds of service we have. Now, the thing is, we had, when we came in, we expected that we would, you know, basically, taking over what you've already had, and then, InfraDAD came back and said, well, we don't have to, we're taking all of that hardware back. So as long as there is not a net difference in PC or servers or services that we're adding, we wouldn't expect to see a difference in the monthly cost. I'm not saying there's not a difference, but if you look at the book there, it does break down in.
It should be about the same.
I don't see.
But there's nothing wrong there for the.
There is on the phone, right?
Nate, question, so InfraDAD basically said, they're going to come, for lack of terms, take our stuff, and then, we better have the stuff ready to go when they come and take it, is that a correct understanding?
Correct.
Did they, I mean, I don't know if they relayed this to you, did they say when they're actually coming to take it, or did they just said, we're coming to take it?
They have not relayed that to us. I would expect that to be at the end of your contract. My understanding is that, at least that you learned, is when, when.
Actually, I was.
In that contract, I don't know that for sure, that's just what I, I.
So you're telling me, that you're just not.
And, who is not, you guys, but I don't know.
But everything in here is paper dabs, and they're taking it, so we now have to replace it, everything. None of it's ours. And we should have had that conversation before, no? That that was ever been going?
That's what I brought up in the past two meetings. I said we have these on realized cost of all these equipment purchases, and I.
We have been sitting here doing this budget since August, you guys.
So, here's your other question. We're the, we'll, we'll just go with the Police Department for now. I'm going to use this number, but it's not right, because you guys got it down to 62. But, the toll says 65,341,90, for the deposit required of 45,793. So that deposit would come off of the 65,000, I believe, number one. But there is no monthly recurring fees in the computer part for the, for the Police Department, or for the city.
No, he said there were.
If there's now these, now these quotes.
So, so Nate, on the quotes that you gave us for the computers, we're just going off with the Police Department, it says the one-time fee of what it is.
Well, 65.
65, but on the same quote, there, there's nothing states that there is a recurring monthly fee for, obviously, all the services, the protection, and so on and so forth. Obviously, that's not true, correct?
So, the only, I would explain, so like, I don't know the total number of PCs off the top of my head that you, that you have, or that you have there, but if, if you have, if, just hypothetically, if InfraDAD has 20 PCs that they're taking back, and we're replacing those with 22 PCs, you won't see a monthly cost difference, because it's, we're, it doesn't matter if you got those PCs from InfraDAD or from us, we're just charging you the cost of managing that.
So basically, he's found here, everything we're just doing, and I don't want to hear what's in the base fees. They're just having a change there, or.
Not going to change the monthly cost.
Alright, so, yeah, so basically, what you're saying is, the equipment cost, I'm just saying that for the Police Department is, we'll say, 65,000 dollars for argument's sake, and whatever InfraDAD's service cost was to manage the Police Department, you're just, for lack of terms, you're taking over that same dollar amount of payment to manage the, the computers at the Police Department, is that the correct understanding?
Uh, no, just to state it a little differently, we are, we are already managing that for you. So our cost isn't changing, unless the total number of PCs is changing.
Okay, yep.
Like if the server location, and there's a difference, like we say on the server.
Okay.
There's a difference between on the firewall or something.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's where even a monthly cost, increase, decrease, whatever it means.
Yeah, of course, of course.
If everything is, if, if, if everything is paying, then you're not going to see a.
You're not going to see a difference yet.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Any other questions for Nate while we have him on the phone here? Yeah, we can think of off the top of our heads.
I want to share with, and break down what it's going to cost us.
Well, we already do that, I mean, we have it for the phones, and then, I mean, you want that in the email.
I want that on the word, that's saying what it's going to cost.
Well, we already paid them for the computers already, so we already have that statement going already. But you just want it on, you want everything.
You can all the email.
Okay, so Nate, if you could, when you send the email out, if you remember this, or we can have Jeff send it over to you, what we're looking for in the email. Obviously, the cost breakdown, I mean, excuse me, the one-time cost, having it change the wording of it, it's going to be a down payment, not a security deposit, and also, obviously, what the, the monthly charge would be based on the number of phones or computers that we have, whether, obviously, if it goes up, we get more phones or more computers, obviously, it's going to go up, and if we, obviously, take away, something's going to go down. Could you put that in an email for us also, please?
Yeah, yeah, that, any, any, uh, monthly price change are included there in the quote. I don't know if I'll be able to, I don't have my computer, so I can access those on my phone, I'll get those sent over tonight, but I might not be able to get those in the mail.
No, no, that, yeah, obviously, you don't expect this tonight, obviously, getting it over tomorrow, that is completely fine.
Okay.
Alright. Any other questions or comments or?
Nate, Nate, so it's Travis in the Police Department, so, in, in June, you guys had billed us to go live in October. I, because I didn't have a budget in 2025, but it was, 15,415 dollars was paid to you guys, another 4,564 was paid to you guys, and 116 dollars was paid to you guys. It looks like all of that was to basically go live and to manage the system. That 15,000 dollars, that's complete support. That, is that, is that covering us just for the remainder of the year, or that 15,415, is that from October 1st of 2025 to October 1st of 2026?
Sure, I can definitely get you the correct answer to that. I don't know off the top of my head, my assumption would be that was our cost to get everything. My assumption would be that was our cost to get everything switched over to us. The hours to, to make the change, the onboarding cost.
Okay.
To get switched over to, um, to, to, and in fact, because we are, uh, billing monthly, so that would not include, um, the remaining costs for the remainder of the year. My assumption would be that is just, uh, onboarding cost. Um, but I, I think it's happening here, but...
Okay, but I, I have, I have those in the waiting room here. I just need some answers, some clarification or whatever. And we can, we can talk further in that. I'd, I'd like to have Lisa from the Treasurers, um, office when we do that call just to understand, because, I mean, the city's already paid, you know, about twenty-one thousand dollars on board. And I just wanna, I wanna make sure that, you know, that we're, we're getting what we get. I mean, I know, I know you're not trying to cheat us or anything like that, but I need Lisa to be on board with, you know, with the accounting department so that we know what we're taking and what we don't have and things like that. So we'll do, we'll do a live call. I'll do a live call with you and Lisa so that we can be together at the same time and...
And then one thing I would say is that, Nate, I'm like, what we know we're doing here is planning to be cautious. We don't like to do this, we don't want to, we need to get that, you know, pretty, you know, onboarding costs. They like to make it very vague or even onboarding costs, whether these expenses are necessary or not. Um, we don't want to be cautious. Um, we're, 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 the reason that we have to do these books that are so straight and high is because InfraDAD is, is telling us that you can't even, you're aware. We have to go through a different place, offices. And that is why these calls are so outrageous. Um, it's, it's really hard to organize, um, something that we would have liked to have done at that time.
Right, it's something, Nate, that when we signed the contract with InfraDAD, we should have looked at to see that they were able to return that. So, you know, no blaming, but surprise!
Yeah. Yeah, and then, and then the other thing I would say is that, um, maybe if you are on board, um, you guys own the PC there by, by, uh, servers.
We're on iron now.
Yeah, um, you own all of these places, but they, three years, your hour contract is just one of the ones. Um, that's, that's all, like, you're, we're not taking it, you know? You don't offer that, what you're saying that's...
Yeah, and Nate, Nate, Lisa had a very valid point there. There's some things that maybe InfraDAD doesn't take that, maybe we can use.
Well, a lot of the computers are not, a lot of the newer computers, they have all odds outright, they're not for that.
My understanding when we did, um, because we did do an assessment after the fact, um, they are taking almost everything and there are some, there are some things that we, that they're not taking. Then what the agents, the teams are at the point where they need to be replaced. Um, that was, uh, that was the, that was, that they had done. They can't come in and, and everything, and, and, and...
Uh, thank you, Nate. Uh, is there any other questions for Nate while we have him on the phone here? Alright, Nate, uh, thank you for taking our call this so late evening. Like I said, Jeff will be in touch and show Travis to get what we need and we'll, you know, keep this conversation moving forward, okay?
Yes, my, my, I know, if I need, um, over to that, I can still, I can still...
Alright, we'll do, thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, bye-bye.
I mean, regardless, I mean, obvi- obviously, they own all of them. Like, I remember they bought, like, when they came on board, they, I don't say bought, but they're all new phones. Regardless, like, we, we are gonna need phones. So, I mean... So, as Lisa said, so according to InfraDAD, our contract runs out in February. No, no, hold on, but according, they're going based on our first payment. So they're saying our first payment wasn't until February. According to our records, our first payment was in October. So whether we keep paying them for December, January, February, that's gonna be on us. Well, our actual contract is, like, when it start, our first payment was in October. Yes, so, I mean, that's all been the, the, the choose to do. But if they say they do come knocking tomorrow and say, "We want our phones back..."
But they're gonna, they're gonna leave our, take our all, right? So we're gonna have to decide when it's not to be able to take them out.
Well, yeah, but, you know, looking at, we'll be paying eight thousand a month. I mean, that's...
Off the top of my head, I don't have it in front of me.
I mean, I, first, we have to see if, Jeff, can you find out from Innotek if they are currently covering all our computer software? Because I know they're, I know they're covering the police. So if they're currently covering all our computer software, we're better off just cutting ties immediately because instead of paying them eight thousand dollars...
We're, we're, we're doing this and we have a different payment and we can say, "We're done now, then we're done now and we switch."
Yeah.
But we also need to make sure, you know, Texas here does what needs to be done. InfraDAD comes and takes the things.
Yeah.
Like, we need to, we need to have, like, a big...
They're gonna have all of your equipment.
Correct, we need to say that, we need to say, okay, we need to make that decision that says, hey, you know what? From December, we're done with InfraDAD.
Okay, now, here's the real question.
So we let them to come in.
Do, obviously, the phones are one cost, but the computers are another cost. We're gonna, Nate, what'd you say the total was, a hundred and?
Sixty-two thousand.
Do we have a hundred and sixty-two thousand to say, hey, we need to... I mean, that's gonna be the, I mean, that's the real question because either way, by February, we need a hundred and sixty-two thousand. I mean, give or take, if, you know, we own twenty-five percent of the computers, still, we still need to come up with at least a hundred...
I know we have to do all the hardware. I know some computers have to be updated. We're gonna have to make some choices.
Yeah.
We have to go hardware, we have no choice. At this point, it has to be done or we don't run. This is, that's it.
My, my question would be is...
The phones, we can do, we've already figured that out, we know that, and then we talked about that last time, we can cover that.
Yeah, my question would be is, why don't we have Jeff and make a phone call to InfraDAD? And they need to give us a list of everything that they're going to take. And then we can move on there.
Well, that's what I'm just discussing that, but we don't even know. I don't, they, they know what they own.
Right. They might not even know that.
Even though they don't own a lot of the computers. I know DPW's gotten some new ones, I know we've gotten some new ones. I know there's new ones that we have just, it made more sense for us to buy them.
Well, they, they were cheaper to buy. They were cheaper for us to buy.
So I know they're not coming in taking everything. So...
No, 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 I mean, under...
Do you know what I pay in a tech...
I don't have it off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
A month?
Yeah.
It's, it's between eight and nine thousand.
For just the maintenance fees of the computers?
Just everything.
Everything.
It's gonna be convoluted. Because all that...
It's not break down one for the other.
Yes, it's like, here's the combined for everything.
Because I don't think we got any new ones from InfraDAD up there. No, but I'm saying under your... No, I, I, I don't think we got anything under, it's usually here from here to now. What's the easiest thing is to have them make a list.
Yeah, but here's the thing, yeah. But I'm saying they're all that, obviously, all of them. Here, take the old thing, we were in the end anyway.
But we're split, that way we know.
Yeah, well, here's the thing, when they switch over to new hardware, if the computer can't...
This is supposed to be...
They can't, like, what is, what's newest Windows?
Their Windows should be the same.
But this is gonna be...
Yeah, yeah.
We know we have to...
So with the, one thing, any voices for Innotek now, and I'm, maybe I'm precise in the same way again, but is that, is that including, like, any of our, like, is that some new? That's not like anything new yet, because that's all these, these are all new.
Yeah, so what's, InfraDAD is taking over what, excuse me, Innotek just took over what InfraDAD's, like, services, like, you have the soft, like, the, the safetyware, all that. That doesn't include any software, that doesn't include any equipment or nothing.
So that's what we're paying eight-five-hundred dollars for now?
Yes. As he, as he said before, like, the one-time fee, that's just it because, like, there's no monthly cost. The, the monthly cost, we're already paying on that monthly cost. So whatever the monthly cost is, that will stay the same, obviously, unless we add users or take away users.
So then I think we're in red.
Besides, besides, it's just two hundred dollars.
Yeah, for the phones, correct, yeah.
Correct.
You mean currently or we will be?
Uh, I mean, I can go through all these quotes and we'll be...
Probably, sorry. Because I said we're hitting everything with one-time fee, boom, 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 that, you know, then moving forward, alright, we have the strategic plan. Alright, five years down the road, we can start cycling out who needs. I'm just making some, DPW year in, maybe it's like your twenty-twenty-eight, financial year in twenty-twenty-nine, whatever, so we can...
So now our budget's no longer balanced. This probably should have been broken down and given to us a long time ago because... I, I, I...
Well, now, here, here's the thing. So the only thing that's changing is the cost of the phones. Was that equi- I mean, the monthly...
We have, that, that's all we're doing. The cost of the phones, we discussed that on the last budget.
Okay, so that's all in this. The only thing that's gonna change is the cost of getting, the one, if we buy every, I'm just saying, worse get rid of buying everything.
Is going to be that.
That's gonna be that. So now the question is, do we have that setting aside somewhere or not? Because if we put...
Not all of them.
How, you know, an idea how much we have?
I can get that for you tomorrow.
Well...
We also want the fact that, that being a year or so is a little tight because taxes...
Correct.
So, you have that to do with it. You don't think it's...
No, no, I, I agree. But like, either way, whether we...
But I think that, to be realistic, they need to tell us what they're taking and we need to know what we own. That we still have to replace in the center. Because that, one, twenty could very easily become eighty, which is very easily then managed.
Well, I mean...
I don't know, I'm just trying to be realistic.
Yeah, I mean, Kevin said we have ZDO money or ZDO money, or the copper, like, for this, is there, is there... I mean, I don't know if the copper had the option on your computer. Like, how much is in there or is there nothing in there? Okay.
No, I know that'll go to the phone.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, we'll have to figure it out because it's one of those things, like...
But if you could have, if you could get them to give me those numbers by Wednesday, I will have that answer for you by the end of the week.
Yeah. I mean, Jeff just emailed now, I don't know if they're gonna be open tomorrow because of Veterans Day.
Right, and that's what I mean, if you could just, maybe Wednesday, they could get me something. But didn't we, didn't we know that they were taking all hardware? I, I don't remember if that needed part of the conversation.
So the last I remember, we...
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
We did discuss that, we, we thought we was summoning them.
Right, so there's some harm in saying it on that.
I think they did run all new stuff when they came in, because what we had was so mission... Yes, I remember. Because everything was like, there was one in this office, one in this office, one in this office, and they ran all down to the basement in the one room. So I think they do own all the hardware. I think what they don't all own is the computers themselves, depending what it may be.
The hardware is something that we have to replace the hardware.
Now, here, here's a stupid question, again. I mean, I don't know IP stuff, so I may know what it's gonna be. Is the hardware gonna change if one person rips out this new hardware and is it still gonna be the same hardware? No, I'm just saying, if they're gonna, I'm just making this up here, I don't know any numbers. If they're gonna rip out, I'll say, M-five wire and put M-five wire.
This is what I was saying, I'm not... Normally, we own it anyhow. Well, regardless, you never take a wire out. That's there, okay? The only thing they should have access to remove is any computers, okay?
Yep.
And a server.
Yeah.
That's it? Say phones, I mean...
Yeah, yeah, the phones, we know, the phones are good, the phones are...
That's what I'm trying to find, we should stop being... Don't worry about that.
So, we, that's the...
Okay, so this, so this is the real quick question, this one for tonight's agenda. Are we still good to vote on the phone purchases?
Yes.
Okay.
That is in the budget that was on, that is going to be okay.
Okay, because that's the only thing that's in for tonight's meeting, is the, is the phone purchases. We, obviously, we don't have to worry about the computer purchases. Vote to them.
Technically, we'll have to do another budget because now we're gonna be, now we're at the end of the year and budgeting.
Yeah.
We have the money to make sure earlier.
Yes.
That's already in the list.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's...
But the issue is gonna be, where do we get spent for the computers?
Well, my question on the computer quotes, I mean, do we need, does everybody need to have docking stations? And does everybody need to have double monitors?
Well, the docking stations are gonna be for anybody that has a laptop.
Okay.
Okay, so at that point, all they do is they plug that in and they use the monitor to set it to the laptop, okay? And keyboard.
I own my laptop and everything.
Those should come with the keyboard for the docking station. The docking stations are cheap. And monitors are cheap.
Are you saying everybody's getting a double monitor?
Oh, I see, there's five Lenovo, five Lenovo ThinkPad laptops and then twelve twenty-four inch monitors.
Why is there a question about a double monitor?
That's right.
Are they, are they just going off of who already has the double monitors? I don't know, that's what I'm, I don't know.
I just, who has double monitor?
But, yeah, no, he's just looking at...
Success. Plus thirteen hundred dollars. I mean, where, where the hell are all these computers going?
Well, you don't need a docking station if you have a desktop.
I'm saying!
Well, I mean, hate to say, if that's, if that's what they're quoting, that's what we have. I mean, they're, they're only...
Well, they told me and they are coming in because they wanna update us and increase us. We probably don't need half of what we want.
So if you have a docking station, that replaces a desktop, okay?
No, yeah, I get that. I'm just saying, they just quoted on what we have.
Is that our part of that?
You understand how docking stations work?
No, this, this is not places, this is just City Hall.
Uh, so that's City Hall, DPW, Parks and Rec.
So who has double monitors here?
I mean, Steve, Derek, Cheryl, Joyce.
Steve, Derek, Cheryl, Joyce.
What?
Why? I have a laptop, I have it on my, to your own.
That's, that's poor, are you serious?
Six dollars half for it.
I'll move the other two more, two more, so...
Steve has those, we just bought them last year, so...
Now, was it, was it the monitors or was it double, double?
Yes.
I don't know.
Well, except cheap. This is where everybody can, so I would assume you guys do need the larger monitors, but the way you're set up.
Yeah, we do, we do, like, we'll put a search warrant here, an affidavit here, and then you can...
That is different.
The police department is different, everybody else is also that.
I just had to ask the same question.
That was, there's no...
There's something else, kind of, like I said, you were more of a knowledge or something. Just because it hasn't, now, it doesn't mean we're... How dark? Well, let's say that's the highest paid, hopefully, the company, but...
Well, he did say it was an, it's a little higher.
Sorry, here's a question. What's more expensive, a desktop or laptop to have? I mean, I, I, I really don't know, because like, if it's cheaper to get a desktop...
First off, going through CDW's, I, it's cheap, I, didn't know, and you, you can get desktops to be more...
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, like, I mean, with all the tech that needs.
Oh, yes, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I need the HDMI.
So the suggestion would be, yeah, just one person, instead of having three of them. There's one person going, looking, you know, technical, going around, and I don't want to, each of them, but it's saying, wow. So I know what you had, it's...
Yeah, but I don't ever...
That's, I'm one person.
Because like, there's a mis, a mis...
Yeah, but that is more.
You have thirteen, thirteen desktop computers.
Well, I'm not getting it, because I'm just, it's, it's, I have no idea.
How many laptops?
That means, you know, five docking stations, five on-premise ports.
I, I just feel personally, and that's broken down into City Hall, we've got them in the Parks and Rec, so it's a combination.
I know there's...
How, one, two?
So I got, no, we shouldn't.
I imagine it's two.
Two, because they're antiques, uh...
I haven't seen it.
So you have, you have...
I've noticed it for years, but I don't know what you're doing.
That's not an issue. The issue is, we're five people at home.
Oh, the other thing is, we're talking, we're talking about, uh, we're talking about a lot of differences.
We're the same one right there.
Well, I agree, if there's four models, I'm gonna.
Well, I, I know, I know, I know.
And I have, you're not online.
You're probably, it's worse, it's all worth it, you don't need one.
And have users, like, users just send them out.
Yeah, we just, we can limit it down by five. I can, some of the, we can give up five, and we can try to give up one.
And the nice part about. Each person.
They're logging in, logging out. I like, I mean, saving money, and you, you're looking at this, the outside.
Everybody that have, or that they have.
We, we need to, to figure out, well, being honest, the computer wise, but the hardware is, they didn't, we have to replace the hardware, so they just want to know that. We can, because you can count these numbers, five thousand, now that was, I'm just.
Again, the hardware is basically a server.
Right.
What was cheaper?
Servers.
Yeah, but also.
That's it, you said it was a company, uh, that we could buy cheaper. Or not mandated.
No, this. No. Like I said, we could go out and shop everything ourselves, this is what they have for what we're saying that we need on our end, or, obviously, the police, we need something different for finance, finance, for code, code, or from whatever.
But they did all by governmental discount, and they, cause I think we asked, we were here.
Budget.
Yeah, they would budget the rest, girl, so.
There's a lot of hesitation, talk to us.
You're gonna be.
I'm in, huh, I called twice. Tell me, maybe they just gave us. They were in town, eh? Oh, no, I called. It is terrible, though we're not voting, we're all gonna be late at five, because I do, they are under mentioning, they were. I just can't, I, I really just can't.
I wanna see if it's, but honestly, I think they will have, I'm, I'm, of no purchase, so we would. Why don't we just have Jeff do it, and Spank will see if you're, like, Jeff will be the main contact guy, you can ask your IT question, Spank, if you're available, when they're able to come through to that work. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so have Jeff walk around, Spank can go get if he's available that day, and that way, we can go to every department saying, alright. I guess, I mean, I wanna see what, I mean, they're normally very prompt, but.
There's no way of any.
A lot of magical money. I haven't, I don't have.
That meeting, or your, how are we starting to develop, and we've done it.
Means to, depending, it's not a major.
Correct. And we have it all.
Sorry, I missed it.
Oh, yeah.
So you can have that, sure. Oh, thanks. So I want you to look at this. You don't have to examine it, I just. Do you see a, a thing there? I, I don't know, but he's a yes, what person, you know? So. Right. But here's, here's the funny.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I will say this, I'm worried my. I would only do the doggos.
Yeah, that's it.
And. I would not contact, you know, that, until we go through with these studies, and then, and we bet, get them to tell us when, how, how, what.
Yeah. It's not, yeah, we.
So, we don't want to do it for that, we have a side date, we're gonna have to, and this.
Everything that just happened. Everything.
So, so, to say, stop everything. So they were just un-sold, you know, just set it, they're.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I've seen them come and figure it out, we haven't seen.
That's what she, that's what.
She hasn't come up now. It's a comfort. Yeah.
That's either.
Yeah.
Have you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, obviously, everyone's offices are locked, under cameras, so. Well, no, I'm just saying, like, once they're stored someplace, that's what I mean.
Um.
Anything about the budget?
Thank you.
Other than what we already said? Alright, budget meeting in Jersey.